Your worship, it's actually a deletion. I'd like to delete eight E as this is committee of the whole that really should be dealt with at council.
Eight E?
Yes.
Microphone on. So, welcome David Solos and Patty Durkey and they're going to present on the Harborfront Museum, the interpretive plan. So you can certainly take your masks off while you're speaking and speak right into the microphone so we can hear you and capture it. Welcome.
Thank you. Got to get my hearing aids back in here now. So thanks for the opportunity to talk to you a wee bit about the Killam Building on the waterfront, heritage structure in its own right, which may be featured in the coming weeks by Heritage Canada as one of Canada's important places. Just so you know, we're going to see how that turns out. So Killam Building, again heritage building was vacant for a number of years and was offered to the Southwest Nova Biosphere Reserve in, I think, 2016 to develop as an interpretive center. It also houses the Killam Shipping Office, the oldest shipping office in Canada from the days of sale. And so the Southwest Nova Biosphere Reserve Association began to develop some displays and an interpretive center in the building. Again, the building, it's an important feature on the waterfront. It's a gathering place for people. It has a coal shed behind it and the stage that is used for summer events. It's really a center point for the Yarmouth waterfront and I congratulate the town on foresight in looking at maintaining it in a way that is a community hub. From my role in communities in Bloom, when we were judged by provincial category, the judges came from Charlottetown and they said, "You've done something that we failed to do and that is you've maintained good public access to your waterfront and this building is the heart of it." So the heritage, the building was developed as an interpretive center for the Southwest Nova Biosphere Reserve, which includes the five southwestern counties of Nova Scotia. We are now being, I want to say discovered by tourism Nova Scotia and the UNESCO branding that goes with that is being recognized as something that is a value-added piece for tourism development. There's still a lot more to do. And then, is it two years ago? Three years ago?
Want me to take over?
Well, just about, yeah. So then a few years ago, Friends of the Light found themselves in a situation and there was space available in the building. I might add, there were some developments over the past year with respect to the building. The third floor that we had used as display space due to it being the third floor in a wooden building was declared by the Fire Marshal to be unusable for display purposes. So it now serves as office space for the groups using the building. It is the largest floor space in the building. So we regretted losing that space, but we have to respect the decision of the Fire Marshal. So again, a few years ago, Friends of the Light were in need of some space. We had some space available and we were there to help out, I think, at a time of need. I'm going to let Patty take over here and she can talk a little bit about how we got to what you're going to see as the presentation proceeds.
So Friends of the Yarmouth Light moved to the Killam Building in May, May 31st of 2018 due to the fact that the municipality of the District of Yarmouth ended the lease. As keeper of the artifacts for 25 years, we wanted to continue to conserve and share the work of the volunteers. And so we were very thankful to Southwest Nova Biosphere and the town of Yarmouth for allowing us to use the third floor of the Killam Building. Our original plan was to develop the third floor into an innovative, hands-on museum which told the story of visitors, the history of visitors to Yarmouth County. Who came? How did they get here? Where did they stay? What did they do? We have a long history of tourism. Folks arrived by steamships and trains, stayed in our many fancy hotels, sailed on Milo, hunted, visited the lighthouses, went deep sea fishing, danced at the lakeside inn, like my mother, attended the opera, shopped, bird watched, hiked, and so much more. Then we started discussions on who was coming and staying and delved into the impact that immigration had on Yarmouth County and region. In the late 1800s and early 1900s, we had an influx of Lebanese folk from Lebanon and Syria and Jewish people from Europe. These people spoke in different languages, yet they connected. Downtown Yarmouth was filled with merchants, many who started as peddlers. During World War II, members of the RAF came from England and stayed. Teachers came from India. A family from Vietnam arrived here in the 70s and so it continues. It's time we shared the stories of those people who helped Yarmouth grow alongside the Acadians, the Mi'kmaq and the Black communities. We want to be able to show the world how you can be culturally diverse in rural communities. So we received a grant from CCH to begin planning our exhibit. And after many meetings with Dave Solos of the UNESCO Biosphere, it became apparent that the whole building needed a plan. So rather than use the $10,000 just for our exhibit, we asked Grant Murray of Murray Designs to create what he thought would work for all the stakeholders. Grant has created exhibits from museums across the province, including the Refuge Canada museum, sorry, exhibit on display now. So as an organization, Friends of the Yarmouth Light is rebuilding our identity and have recently received donations from coastal financial and local businesses. Our intent is to change the name to reflect the new direction. So in the plan, this is an interpretive plan. We have some ideas for the outside of the building and then we have some direction on how to develop each floor. So in this picture, what you're seeing is the foyer and we have an introduction to the Killam Brothers Shipping Office, the Southwest Nova Biosphere. We'd have a gift shop and then open to the back deck, which we have recommended that we do some work in the back so that we could have events out on that deck, which is really not unstable and I believe I've spoken to Jeff already about possible grants to get money to improve the heating and the safety in the building.
Thought that was on the second floor, that deck.
It is. So that's the steps that go up to the deck from that floor. So there are some key messages which I'm not going to go through here because I know we have a lack of time. But to allow you to read through this, an introductory exhibit starts. We have a visitor information center. Basically, the idea is that through our stories and through Southwest Nova Biosphere, we tell stories and then we send people off on their way. Particularly, we could work on ecotourism. We can work on the history. We can send people out to the lighthouse and we can continue sharing all the things that people used to do years ago and we can share that and then how we can still do that the same due to the environment that we live in. So that's just an idea of how the foyer gallery, a suggestion was to have the gift shop as a Yarmouth peddler shop because that's how we started. And an idea also is to have a wagon in the back that we could rent out to arts and crafts people to kind of put a fake horse, but a wagon because that's how we started and kind of go back to that style of peddling from outside. The Killam Brothers Shipping Office, which is run by the Yarmouth County Museum, would stay the same essentially, but we would introduce that in the foyer as to what people were coming to visit. Dave, you want to talk about this part?
So this would be the area for the Southwest Nova Biosphere Reserve interpretive section. So some interactive displays here featuring a lot of the information about the biodiversity that exists in UNESCO Southwest Nova Biosphere Reserve, what makes it a special place, why UNESCO recognized it. By the way, as an aside, UNESCO delisted the city of Liverpool, England yesterday. So it's hard to get UNESCO branding. It's even harder to keep it. And we've succeeded in running through that first review that they do every 10 years. Okay, so in this area, information that would engage people to think about what is special about this area and why, rather than rushing off to another place, they might decide to spend some time here. Sorry about that. Later. So the whole intent here is to help people get in touch with some of the natural beauty and how to find out where to go in the five southwestern counties. So there's some examples of some of the exhibits that could be created to go there.
We're really fortunate to be working with Grant Murray. He has designed most of the museums, especially the provincial museums across Nova Scotia. So he's so well-versed in experience. He's really positive about our project because he feels that it's completely different from anything else, anywhere else, to combine both the Harborfront Museum and our history with the Southwest Nova Biosphere. So there's some ideas. This is kind of a quick sketch of the information on the Southwest Nova Biosphere visitor section.
And there are a lot of pop-up, I want to say pop-up exhibits. Exhibits will be of the type that are portable, can be moved around to if you need to open space up or use that space for a different purpose for whatever reason.
So on the second floor, which is the Harborfront Museum, what we're looking at is recreating what Yarmouth looked, used to look like many years ago and how immigration had a huge economic impact. So we think about in the late 1900s and early 1900s, sorry, how we had a lot of businesses who were run by immigrants from South End to Main Street and we want to show what those were like. So we're in the midst of collecting artifacts from those businesses. We're working with Joe Bishara on the Lebanese side and myself. I've been connected with a lot of the old members of the Jewish community who don't live here anymore, but do live around the world and collecting information about their stories. And so we'd like to kind of set up a general store because that's what they were and maybe a menswear store and those of you who've been around for a long time would know that we had many, many menswear stores, so many more than women. And then we're looking at having a genealogy gallery where people can study some of their genealogy. And E is a diversity gallery. So we want to look at sharing stories from all of our different cultures. So, and that would be rotational. So we'd have stories up about, you know, for example, four different families and then after a couple of months, we change it up. And this just doesn't include the Lebanese, Jewish community, the people from India who came, but we want to include the Acadian stories, the Mi'kmaq stories and the Black history as well. And then the C is basically a tourism history. So basically what I focused on when I first spoke about how did people get here? What did they do? We want to talk about our history because it was huge, absolutely huge. So using the stairwell to link information, more on the second floor, which I forget what we spoke about there. Oh, the B is the general store and the menswear store. We look at, you know, having a suit in progress because that's what people did. They custom made things then and showing advertising. And then there's, we have a block of the families and stories. And so this is kind of a general idea of the vintage general store and how that could look. And then the tourism store talking about, oh, the Grand Hotel across the way and then we can send people to see what it looks like, how people got here, Babe Ruth. There's just so much to tell. And so I'm going to go right to this section D where we can share genealogy, but that's something that's really flexible too in that section there that we might be able to include more the Southwest Nova Biosphere section. And then that's the diversity gallery. And so here are some examples of some of the panels that we could create. So this basically was the story of Saul and Hill de Gillis who created the Yarmouth tartan and who ran thistle knit and how they came from Scotland and arrived to Yarmouth. And it would be, we have pictures, how they got here, pictures of the business, et cetera. And then the third floor would be staffing offices, artifact storage room, genealogy records, business offices and the Nova Scotia Biosphere research area. So the Killam Building Heritage Center just shows three different organizations. And so very quickly, the Harborfront Museum, Killam Brothers Shipbuilding Office, run by the Yarmouth County Museum and the Southwest Nova Biosphere could become the hub of the waterfront. We tell our stories and then send visitors off to explore West Nova. We can be the center for ecotourism. We can create a waterfront collective with local businesses and the Sweeney's Museum. We can use this facility to host events celebrating our culture and heritage and unique environment. We can be open in the winter and have staff research activities, offer short courses on our heritage and can offer school programs. We just need to be given that chance. So we thank you for your consideration. For us moving forward with this project, we know what would we require investment and we've got some ideas of where we would go for the money. The next step would be to apply to CCH to take on the next step, which is using Grant, Grant Murray to come up with the actual proposal, designs, cost it out, et cetera. And we're ready to go with that and he's ready to go too.
I want to just say one more thing and I want to say an ideal maybe that we will outgrow the facility. It's a good problem to have and all of the exhibits that are going in are portable so they can be moved. So that would be something just to keep in mind as we look down the road. But it's an opportunity at this point to look at a redevelopment of what the building would look like inside. So thank you all for your time and for the opportunity to make use of that amazing building. It's a huge piece of heritage on our waterfront that most of us don't value quite the way it probably should be.
We also feel we can work really well together and really make this a hub.
We have had no arguments yet.
No. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, questions, folks? Go ahead, Council Hatfield. Well, I guess I don't have this. Hang on a second because you know what just happened. No, I haven't.
I just want, if you could speak to the refugee display that is presently on display down there for a minute.
So Pier 21 in Halifax had created for this year an exhibit that was intended to be a traveling exhibit. It was in Halifax at the Maritime Museum and through Patty's connections, this is the first place that's been shown outside of Halifax. So it will be traveling, but it's here until, what's the date?
October.
October. So stop in and see it. It opens your eyes about what it is like to be a refugee and Canada's role in taking in refugees and how sometimes we haven't always been as good as we might think we are.
That has to get out because I didn't realize that.
Yes. So what's really neat about it is it goes back to the 1800s and it talks about the Dukabors and it talks about people, where they went in Canada. It's really fascinating to gather the information that's there and it was actually designed by Grant Murray. So yes, please, please come out and have a look.
A lot of people don't know the difference between an immigrant and a refugee. To many people, it's the same thing and it's not. And the contributions of refugees to Canada as a nation, we don't understand very well. It helps put a little of that in perspective as well. So it's worth seeing. Stop in.
Absolutely. And I want to add that because we couldn't have visitors to the third floor, we've moved the artifacts to the second floor in the meantime and have begun a working museum, basically, which has, we've started setting up, you know, in general, the idea is there, but just in our own way because we don't, we don't have all the panels and things that we need. Panels, right Pam? So there's lots of artifacts and we're working on doing some write-ups that go with some of the things that we have there now.
So was there an ask here?
So yes, our ask is that you support our proposal and ask us to, allow us to move forward with the next stage in coming up with the design for the Killam Heritage Center.
I thought it was important that we do this because initially, so the building was Southwest Nova Biosphere. We've taken in a refugee and now the refugee is looking for a home. So anyway, I thought it was important to bring that to council so that if it proceeds, it proceeds with the full knowledge and support of council. And if council has different ideas, then that's important for us to know before people go off in another direction.
Right. Before we start asking the government and folks for sizable donations, we obviously needed your approval to go ahead with this. And we've already got some people who have said, "Absolutely, when you are ready to go and you are start, and if, you know, this gets approved and you start looking for money, please get in touch with us and we'll be ready to hand it out."
So Dave, you got a, do you have enough space for the Biosphere piece?
There will never be enough space for everything. At this time, we can accommodate each other. Like I say, the dream might be that we will outgrow the space, one group or the other, and then we'll just wind up looking for another space where we can expand the stories that we're trying to tell.
But we have to start somewhere.
We do have to start. That's the whole idea, a place to start and then where we go from there.
Okay. Questions, anyone? Go ahead, CAO.
Yep. I'll just add to the, add to the story a little bit. When council engaged with the Biosphere, I think Pam, you'll remember the meeting when Cliff Drysdale came in and was meeting with council and talking about the Southwest Biosphere and we had talked about the possibility of engaging with them in the development of the Killam Building as a science center based on the ecology and whatnot in the five counties that make up the Biosphere and to help to promote and take advantage of the UNESCO brand for tourism and for education. And so that was the invitation into the Biosphere, which they accepted and they haven't developed the science center, you know, that we were dreaming of in those days or those years, a few years ago. They did take in a refugee a few years ago with the museum and that's been a happy partnership as you've heard. The vision that is presented in this document is different than what the vision was of council five or six years ago. And when I saw this, I thought it was really important that we just stop and take a breath and make sure that all the parties are on the same page. If this vision resonates with council for that building and this development, then I think that just means that as far as a science center goes, not that we lose that hope, but that we have to envision that somewhere else. If the museum is going to be a permanent tenant in the building, we have to talk about a formal arrangement with the museum group about that because right now, the gift to the Biosphere was to go ahead and use it because we had a vision that they were going to fulfill. If that's going to turn into another organization essentially using most of the building for their purpose, we need to talk about that, just what that arrangement is going forward. The other thing that may or may not be relevant here, I'm at the risk of not being relevant. We do have a museum on the waterfront that we own and are operating. It opened on Monday and we are a tenant of somebody else. And that landlord may not have the capacity to accommodate us going forward. So we may have a museum of our own full of artifacts and history that we need to think about locating somewhere else. And I'm not suggesting that the Killam Building would be that location. I don't necessarily see that's not the vision for it. But just to throw it out there that we have another issue around museums that we have to deal with as well. So to come back to the question that you need to consider is, is this the vision for the Killam Building that resonates with you and that you're willing to support going forward? And I'll stop talking.
Good. Everybody good? Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
For the opportunity and good luck with your deliberations.
And please have a look at our PDF and you'll get more detailed information about our ideas.
I think we all read it.
If you haven't already. Thank you.
We can't free pay.
Thanks so much.
Good stuff. Okay, let me just file up that presentation. Okay, staff report, CAO report. Anybody get out your magnifying glass and read that? Have to tease you, Jeff. Any questions for CAO? Good? Okay, engineering and Mark's not here, but I think there's a report. So he'll be back probably in the next couple of weeks. Okay. Finance, Jerry is here. I have a question for you, Jerry. Parking permits. You know, I'm going to ask about, like, did we lose our day passes?
No. We still do day passes. People have to come here for day passes though, I believe. But yeah, no, people can still obtain day passes through the new app.
All right. But they can only get them here?
I think I can confirm. I'm not sure if that's part of the app or not.
All right. Okay. Any questions for Jerry?
I wanted to mention one thing just so council knows and also if anyone watches, they are clear. And that is to do with water shut-offs. So with the retirement of Russell and Brittany taking over and back to full work and, you know, pandemic kind of loosening up, we've been after people to get back on solid, on track with bill payments. So we have had to threaten, I guess, is not the real correct word, but had to put door hangers on people's buildings to say, "If you don't pay, you're being turned off on this date." And it's usually about four or five days later. But we only ever get to that point when people ignore us or don't reply to us or don't communicate with us at all. So they get lots of opportunities to do that. So we send out letters saying, "You're past due." We then send out letters saying, "You're way past due" when you're now on the shut-off list. We then send out a third letter saying, "You're now on the second month's shut-off list." And then before we turn them off, we actually physically make phone calls, reach out, email, whatever. So it's only when we are totally ignored for probably 30 to 45 days that they would actually get a door hanger to say, "If you don't come in and pay, you'll be shut off." And miraculously, most people, when that door hanger's on, they all of a sudden communicate with us. So unfortunately, a few people chose to ignore that. They get shut off. Once they have no water, they run in and pay the bill and we turn the water back on. So it's kind of a, it's a last straw, last attempt, kind of frustrating on staffs because we're not there trying to shut people's water off. We're just trying to collect the bills and keep them current. I just wanted to be clear to council that we don't just say, "Oh, you're two days past due and shut your water off." There's probably a good 30 days of trying. There's probably a good thirty days of trying to correspond with, with folks to get the, make arrangements and pay, and get caught up on their bills.
Good, any questions for Jerry? Good, all right. Thank you. Fire, fire department, and I see our chief is here, do we have any questions for the fire chief? No, I was going to ask, I don't know if we asked this.
I do too.
Before, oh, sorry, didn't even see, you go ahead.
Oh yeah, don't look at me.
I didn't see it, I usually see, I saw your hand go up, I thought you were waving to it.
Actually, I, I just want to ask, so you can say it in public, how the, how the volunteer recruitment is going?
It's going early well, we're at the point where we're going to have to spend a bunch of money soon, so. When I spend money, it's actually a good thing in my opinion, so.
That's amazing, that's so good to hear.
Yep, we're actually at, it says seven in my report, I'm at nine now and I got three more on the pipe, so.
That's wonderful, that's, that's the best news and that's the best news.
It's been, been, been well received, community is really.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Thanks and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So, my question was different, have we ever looked at how many fire calls are from in town and out of town?
I haven't specifically, but that's going to be part of the fire underwriter survey that we're beginning really soon.
I think we asked, I asked Steve today, did we ask that question? Because we were interested in knowing.
Yeah.
And I think you might have answered that before.
I, I may have, my, my short-term memory is not very great.
My short-term memory's gone, but my long-term is too.
The older I get, the worse it's going to be. But we are looking into it and I have started some, some specific stuff, looking for information on that, so we can better understand it.
Exactly, good. Any questions for the chief, anyone? Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, operations and Chad's here, any questions for, for Chad? Did you need to share anything with us, you good?
Maybe just a quick update on the crosswalk request for Water Street. I think we're one step closer to putting a crosswalk in there, but maybe for councillor Lesser, I know the, the request came from an octagon at the TCRSC building. If you want to let them know, or maybe they can call me, the best location for a crosswalk in that area is actually on the north side of that intersection, so I just hope the expectation isn't that the crosswalk is going to be aligned with the doors to the TCRSC building. We just have better sightlines and, and accessibility on the north side, so just, just so they're clear of that, if that's okay.
Okay, I have a question, I can't remember what it was, go ahead deputy.
Just a question, I see about the south end school lights, is there roughly a timeline? I got a few kids that are wondering.
Yeah, no, I apologize.
It's all right, you've been on it.
Some things take longer than, than you anticipate and unfortunately, this is one of those things, it took a long time to get Nova Scotia Power there to, to do the reconnect. And as I think I, I texted you, we're going to try to be as dark sky friendly as we can with the new lights and so that takes a little more time to get costing for those lights, so I hate to give timelines because.
Right, it's coming.
Compelled to, to meet those timelines, so.
Thank you.
So, Oak Drive, I, I read everything, just so, we, council does read everything, I can assure you that, unless they're tricking us.
I miss Jim for those reasons.
Right?
He read everything, yeah.
No, I, I just, I, I just don't understand the, is there an issue? Like, is it a, it's just such a, looks like such a no-brainer, but.
No-brainer in which way? You think, you think it should come out?
Removing, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the median was put there, Oak Drive used to be a dead end.
Yes.
Until, until Brooklyn Street or Charles Crosby Drive was extended. So, I think the intent was to, to reduce the traffic that's using Oak Drive as a thoroughfare to get from, from Charles Crosby back onto Elm Street, so. Yeah, it should be a no-brainer, I just.
I'm not saying it is, you're the expert, I just didn't know if there was a, an issue with traffic or something, that's all, Jeff?
So, so when Charles Crosby Drive was open, that was a bit contentious for the folks living on Oak Drive and on the upper part of Elm Street. They had enjoyed living on a dead-end street, very quiet for many years. And the idea that we were building a new street that would bring traffic off of Stars Road that was heading to the north side of town, it really, it was an intentional decision by the town to, to, to create that opportunity to release some traffic from Stars Road, so.
Okay.
There was no bones about the fact that there was going to be more traffic. And the folks on Oak Drive particularly, didn't want any traffic coming in off of Charles Crosby Drive or Brooklyn, Brooklyn Street at the time. They wanted assurance that that wasn't going to happen and the way to follow through on that assurance was to make it that you couldn't, you couldn't take a, a turn, a left turn into, into Oak Drive. So, maybe with the passing of ten or between ten and fifteen years, maybe the, the sentiment in, in, on the street has changed, but that was why that little island and, and the restriction was in place, it was at the request of the, of the property owners.
Good, great.
Yeah, and perhaps the sentiment has changed because it's, it's Oak Drive residents that I think are asking us to remove them.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was wondering if they were asking then, okay, good, go ahead there.
So Chad, do we see that being removed is in the future? Because I, I do know that I've spoken to some of the residents on Oak Drive and you're right, you know, most of them are, are concerned, wishing that that wasn't there, so.
Yeah, we just have to make sure that the width of Oak Drive is, it's wide enough to accommodate two-way trafficking, that's all.
Good, any more questions for Chad? Good, thank you. Planning and economic development, Natalie's not here, but the report is, so we can reach out to her when she's home, when she's home, when she's back at work. And recreation, is Frank here? No, anything there? Go ahead.
Just wondering if we can, I know we had a budget out from recreation at one point. Just wondering if we can get a breakdown of the summer, the summer programs and how much of a revenue, how much revenue it brings in or how much it costs to run the summer programs? I don't know if that's a, a request we can make?
Go, go ahead.
And then, sorry, as well, the effect that COVID might have had on that is the other part of that.
Go ahead, CAO.
So, just so, I'm sure I know what I'm asking for, so I'm asking for the summer program revenue budget, essentially, and, and maybe actuals that they have to date. And the effect of COVID, do you, so to see that, do you want to see the budget from say two summers ago, pre-COVID, for comparison? Excuse me, yeah, okay.
Want a motion? Yes. So, the motion is to look into, go ahead councillor Lesser.
Make a motion that we direct staff to look into the revenue generation, I guess, or the cost of running a summer program during COVID and pre-COVID and the comparison of that.
Okay, second by deputy mayor, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, go ahead deputy.
Last time I heard requested that numbers be, if we could get numbers on how many kids are from town or Modi or whatnot, I just see that's not included in the report. I'm just wondering if we could ask if that could be followed up on, just to. Okay, I, I had asked Frank last time, just to, if he could, and I noticed the numbers are here, but I, I don't see numbers for pop-ups either and I'm just wondering, because sometimes they take place out of town and, you know, is it drawing kind of town people or not, so just heads up on that if we could, if there's a motion, I can make that too. Yep, so just to, to make a motion that the reports include how many town participants are going to day camp, pop-up camps and sports camps, if we could get that.
Good, second by councillor Lesser. All those, go ahead.
Oh no, just a quick question, I was wondering, since I'm designated to be on the recreation committee, I'm wondering when meetings may resume? If we could find that out?
Okay, did you make a motion? Seconded, okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Anything else under recreation, anyone? Okay. Business, personal protective equipment policy, and the recommended motion there is that council make no amendments to the personal protective equipment policy as recommended by the OHS committee. Who wants to make that motion, or CAO, did you want, did you need to speak to it?
I don't need to, but I just, there are several policy recommendations on today's agenda that are, as we've talked about before, we, we put every policy and bylaw through a review now every four years and so that's just why these are on your agenda.
Okay, thank you. Moved by councillor Dares, second by deputy mayor, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Four-day work week, and the recommended motion here is that staff be directed to draft a policy to permit a four-day work week as an option for the town of Yarmouth non-union employees. Man, I'd make that motion if I wasn't in this chair, okay? So, go ahead councillor Dares.
I'm happy to make that motion, I think it's long overdue, so, thank you.
Second by councillor Hatfield. This, this one, this one's really exciting, this has a lot of opportunities attached to it, not, not just for our current staff, but, you know, bringing in other people and, this is done a lot of places in the world anyway. So, yeah, good Jeff, thank you.
Just for those that haven't read through it, maybe you could just verbalize the highlights of that so that people understand what the benefits are.
Yep, briefly, because.
Okay, so, so the idea, and, and this idea came to, came to me through what's going on in some other municipalities, in Geisborough and in the district of Digby, and I know it's being considered in some other Nova Scotia municipalities. It's, it's essentially reducing the work week to four longer days, maintaining the same number of hours and extending the hours of service to, to the public. What's happened through COVID is, I think Geisborough did it because they broke their team into two groups, much like we did in Public Works. They did it in their administrative office, which is not something that we did. But what they found in doing that was, was a higher level of satisfaction from their employees and engagement. And we've been talking about it in municipal administrator circles, you know, following up, how did that go? It's more popular in the news, so, so I started to ask some questions, like where's the other side of this, where's the downside? And honestly, there isn't, there isn't one. The public gets, gets longer hours of service, the employees are, that participate are happier and, and engaged. It is one of the things that, that I look at particularly is on attraction and retention of talent in, in specific technical areas. We have had positions that we've had vacant for up to two years, trying to find a qualified person to take, take on the responsibility. It's not uncommon for us to take a full year to find someone. Being able to offer a, a four-day work week, I think gives us a, a talent attraction asset that, that may not be matched today in every, in every other municipality or workplace. I think that the shelf life on that advantage will be short-lived because I think that's the way things are going in, in, generally in, in public service particularly. But there's also the retention side. And we've got some great people that, that work for the town and I think that if we can hang on to those that may be eligible or thinking about retirement a little longer, I think that's to the advantage of our, of our residents and to the organization. So, I just don't see a downside because it is optional, we're not making it a mandatory thing. We'll be very careful if, if we go forward to, to ensure, you know, service to the community and, and, you know, balance in terms of the, the availability of, of, of people Monday to Friday, so. I'm, yeah, I'm, this is not something I would have brought to council five years ago, frankly. You know, I don't think my thinking was that progressive, but maybe that's one of the nice things that's come out of COVID is I've had my eyes opened a little bit to alternative, you know, work schedules and, and situations.
Well, we've seen that it works too, right?
And that's it, is we've, we've, we've experienced it working in, to an amazing level, frankly. So, I, I feel that this is something that I'm enthusiastically recommending to council.
Good, go ahead deputy.
Yeah, I just think it's forward-thinking when I was reading it and you think, you know, in this day and age with mental health and burnout and things that go on, the ability to know that you'll have a Friday off and could spend it with your family and, you know, still put in your work week and I, I think it's great, so 100% support it and glad we're kind of ahead of the, the game here, so, great job.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Training day motion is that council make no amendments to the training policy as recommended by the OHS committee. Moved by councillor Dares, second by deputy mayor, any discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Inspection policy as well, that council make no amendments to the inspection policy as recommended by the OHS committee. Moved by councillor Hatfield. Second by councillor Cleveland, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. We removed eight E and then eight F Milton parking report.
Your worship, just, I can introduce that, there was a, a motion of council that requested that staff look into the issue of parking in the, in the commercial area of Milton. Reese Burnell, our planner, took the lead on that and has provided a report. And the report essentially, if you've looked at it, if you've read through it, it's, it's very detailed and, and very well done, as, as is usually, not usually, always the case with Reese. And it is pointing towards the fact that there would have to be a land acquisition to create additional parking within that Milton area. And he specifies a, a property that is underutilized or underdeveloped at this time. So, I don't know if you want, if you want to discuss that, Reese is here, he can certainly answer questions on his report.
Any questions for Reese? Go ahead deputy.
Not a question, but just a pat on the back, I work in a school system and you always tell the kids, if you're going to write a report, write it as if the person who was reading it never had a clue. If you never had a clue and read that, you would know everything you need to know, so great job, I think it fills in all the blanks, crosses all the Ts, dots all the Is, so good job on that.
Councillor Lesser?
Yeah, I will echo that as well, it's a, a great report. It also does a couple other things perhaps. The land on the corner is not really well-kept. I think it's no fault of the owner, I think it's a hard area to keep clean, but there's that Japanese bamboo that grows up. So, what actually happens on that corner now is the parking is working quite well, but the bamboo is actually now preventing people from seeing out there. And, and having changed the parking in that area, it has become a harder, it's become harder for the medical center staff to find places to park and I noticed they're going up, further up Chestnut Street now. So, I, you know, I, I think parking in that area would be great. And I'm, and that would, like, looking at the photos, the building would, would come down as well and continue on to the empty lot, is that correct?
Yeah, so, there are kind of two options here. So, what I didn't kind of mention in the report is, so that lot is currently now for sale. There, I can't really discuss the details, it's, it's not going through the planning process now, but there has been a developer that has been interested in the lot and it has been discussed, the potential for public parking and there is interest there, so that's a possibility as well. But, um, kind of getting into the weeds of those details, but I guess the possibility is refurbishing and reusing that building.
Okay. Go ahead CAO.
So, at this point, your worship, I, I, I think I, I think I heard Reese correctly is that, is that. is that, is that there's some interest, some private interest around that property that could help facilitate some public parking, potentially?
Yeah, exactly.
So, at, at this point, maybe it's worthwhile just to receive the report, and, you know, regroup in August and see where we are. The property is for sale, but if there's a, a solution that gives us both private development as well as public parking, that's kind of the best of both worlds. However, if you, if you felt that you wanted to discuss the possibility of acquiring that property, maybe that's something we should discuss in camera, as property acquisition, you're entitled to do so, so, I'll just flag that for you.
Okay, we, we, let's do that, we okay with that going in camera?
Yeah.
Having a conversation, you can talk in with us for a minute?
Yeah.
Okay? Good, any more questions for Reese on this one? Okay, so we're just gonna receive that report, okay, we don't have to do anything with it. Okay.
With thanks, thank you very much.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate you. I would've driven up the street and said, yeah, we need more parking. Okay, backyard fire bylaw? Okay, so, this, this is the part where we have the discussion on, on the draft bylaw that was put forward, and Chief, by all means, don't, don't wait for me to invite you if you want to come up and share anything, you know, that's, that's important, go ahead CAO.
So, your worship, maybe I can introduce the, the conversation. So, the motion from council was to develop a, develop a bylaw that would permit backyard burning, to look at other municipalities, and to develop a bylaw for, for our town. So, we started actually with a draft model bylaw that was developed by the Canadian Council's Ministers of the Environment. This, this was based on their bylaw, tailored to our situation, to some, you know, to, to a large degree, I guess, and, and what it was that council wanted to permit. So their model bylaw applies to rural areas where there might be forestry operations and stuff like that, so, we were talking about trying to allow backyard burning for recreation or leisure pastime. So, we think we, we've done that within this bylaw. When we had a draft, we went and looked at HRM, we looked at Shelburne to see what they had, and I can say that, that the one thing that is in this bylaw that I think is, is going, I'm sure it would be a topic of discussion, is the whole idea of sensitive receptors. So sensitive receptors have been identified in our bylaw, and there are many of them, from nurseries to hospitals, medical clinics, assisted living facilities, and so on. We took definitions right of, right out of our land use bylaw, many of those categories were recommended in the CCME bylaw, we've adapted them by definition to, to our situation. We gave you two maps that show two level of, of buffers from those sensitive receptors, one at 150 meters and one at 90 meters. Those are, those are just to show you kind of what the impact of those sensitive receptors are. We have left it pretty wide open in terms of what a person can have, as far as a, a backyard fireplace or outdoor burning unit, it can be, it can be custom-made, or it can be bought off the shelf. The one most important thing about it is it must have a spark arrestor, three-eighth-inch or forget how many millimeter screen that helps to contain the sparks within the unit. The fire chief and the fire department would be issuing permits under the bylaw for anyone who was, who was wishing to have a, a backyard burn permit. They would visit the site, they would understand where the fire pit was to be placed, they would understand what the fire pit is to be, and they would issue a permit, and permits are issued on an annual basis for a small fee. Permits are forfeited if there is a fine under the bylaw, that, that results from, from not following the bylaw, so. I'll stop talking, all of the information I'm kind of describing is in both my cover report and, and within the bylaw itself.
Good. Okay, Councilor Lesser?
Thank you. I guess when I first brought this up, I was thinking it was kind of a simple yes/no, and I didn't really have a, an opinion of my own, and I didn't realize how much work was gonna go into doing this, so thank you to everybody that had a part in playing in it. I guess the, what I wasn't sure when I first looked at it was the 90 and 150, so the idea would be that we could consider either one of those. Okay. I know the, the 150 to me seems like there'd be very few areas that would allow it, the 90 seems more reasonable. The other part is, what I really liked is that the homeowner had to apply for the permit, which then would not allow, I'm assuming, a tenant to come in and do it, which I, I would be really good for the landlords to not have to try to patrol that. And then the only other question I had that the CAO just made reference to is, if you, if you were to break, or not follow through on this and get a fine, the permit would be seized from the property or from the, the owner who applied for it?
The, the intention is that the permit would be nullified, and if the property owner wished to reapply, they could. The fire chief and, and his staff would, would use their, their judgment discretion in terms of, you know, issuing a, a replacement permit.
It'll depend on the circumstances surrounding it, essentially.
Yeah, I think you're, you're thinking of places that are rented, is that what's in, that's what's in my head, right? Like a rental where, where your tenant, you go out and you get the, the document, the permit, and your tenant messes it up, right? Then you get another tenant in there, that's, that's okay, like, you know, that's the, yeah. Somebody's light, Councilor Cleveland?
Oh, okay, thank you. There's a lot to this, and, you know, I, I see the rules, and the rules do make sense. How do you enforce it? And I want, I want to bring the chief in on this, because it's going to be the chief's job to handle enforcement, and that's, it's a huge, it's a big job, it's going to be a big job, and take a, a lot of time, I would think. I mean, even, even something as simple as, okay, permits are 50 bucks a year, so you have to do it with a permit. So, my neighbor next door starts lighting a fire, how do I know if they have a permit or not? Chief, is this enforceable?
It, is it gonna be challenging to enforce? We would definitely, it would be a work in progress, you know, we haven't done this before, so there's some training for my staff, if they're gonna handle, you know, tickets, essentially. You know, if, if, for example, my guys are on a call, and, you know, someone complains about their neighbor, we're not gonna attend that. So, you know, hopefully through working with my staff and the bylaw enforcement, we're gonna do our very best.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
That's, that's the nice answer.
Yeah, it is, I, I want, I guess, thank you.
No, I'm just gonna call it for what it is, right? Like, am I out of line?
Can I just add to what the chief had to say? You know, bylaw enforcement, any of our bylaws, the enforcement in terms of a response to a complaint is not always instant, right? Our bylaw enforcement officer for all of the bylaws are, are nine-to-five kind of people, right? So if you have a noise complaint in the evening, you might call, call the RCMP, or you might call the bylaw officer the next morning, because that's when he's, when he's back at work. With the fire department, we have a unique situation, they are, they're actually on call, on duty 24/7, so when the burning would occur, it would be in the evening, we would, we would say, and so we do have staff on, and, and the response time, timeliness of it might be better. I think what will happen is that if you permit, permit backyard fire pits, you will have a lineup, you know, to get permits, and that will keep them busy for, for a while, but it's only when it's a problem are you gonna get the calls to, for enforcement. They're not gonna patrol and check their list and see if, if, you know, Steve has a fire there, does Steve have a permit? That's, that's not generally the way it's gonna go, it's gonna go more the way of, a complaint comes in, and then they check and see if the property has a permit, if they do, they respond to the, to the, as a complaint, and if there's a, if there's an issue, they, they deal with it. Ideally, the complaint goes first to the property owner, right? And the property owner says, well, I don't want to lose my permit, maybe, you know, maybe it isn't a good night to burn, for whatever reason, or maybe, you know, the, the wood I'm burning isn't, isn't actually dry enough, it is creating some smoke, and they kind of try to manage it themselves between good neighbors. Where we get involved in bylaw enforcement a lot is when neighbors don't especially get along, and, and, and this becomes a thorn in somebody's side, whether it's, you know, I think of, I can think of different situations in the past where it's, you know, where somebody's parking a vehicle, the nature of the vehicle that's being parked, or, you know, the noise, or the light, or whatever it is that, that annoys a neighbor. This could introduce another thing, but honestly, I believe, I don't have proof, I believe there, there is some burning going on in the town right now, and it must be that it's not annoying neighbors, because we're not getting calls. So, will permitting it create more nuisance than, than not permitting it and having it happen? I don't know, I, it might, but given there are some rules and some permitting around this, we might ac, might not actually get too many complaints. If, if people see this as, as a privilege, a new privilege, and they do what the fire department is, is asking them to do through this bylaw, we might not get a lot of complaints. There will be some, and, at, at some point, but, you know, they'll be able to deal with it, and we've got good staff at the fire department with, with training and qualification that can go out, and, and much like our, our police chief was saying yesterday in the meeting, you know, the first, the first approach is to warn and to correct, right? Not, not to fine, right? So we're not gonna create bad relations with our fire department by walking in with a ticket book every time we get a complaint. It's more about trying to have people enjoy the pastime and, and respect their neighbors, and if they're doing both, you know, we're a happy community, so. I think it's manageable, I don't, I, I, I wanna be optimistic and say that, that people will take this privilege and, and value it, and, you know, burn on appropriate, on appropriate nights and, and enjoy it, without upsetting their neighbors.
I need a light, so I can have, I feel up there.
But you've got the floor, anytime you want it.
Just to add to what Jeff said, obviously, my opinions are, are pretty obvious, but we are gonna try and make, you know, the best of the situation, and, you know, when, when we go to look, you know, for a possible permitting situation, we're gonna use the best kind of education practices we can, so that people understand, you know, what, what they can and can't do, their neighbors are gonna see us there, they're gonna see us in the community, that aspect of it is good. As well, like CAO said, you know, if, if there is an incident, I, I don't foresee my guys handing out, and girls handing out fines, per se, we're gonna hopefully do some education. If we need to, we're gonna fill the fire pit full of foam and water, and there'll be a couple of weeks before they can try it again, and then we'll probably, you know, defer it to the, as much as possible, to the bylaw enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
That, that feels better.
A little bit.
A little, little bit better. It's, it's hard, I'm just gonna say it, it's hard being there, because we, we're, we're asking for something, but we also need to be able to say, you know, this is, this is where the chief was, right? It, that, that's true, your, your opinion is tremendously important to us, even if we decide to go in another direction and give it a try, you have the right afterwards to say, I told you so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reserving that right, absolutely, yeah.
Oh, gosh. Okay, Councilor Hatfield?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm concerned about enforcement as, as well, and that is a, a big concern. I also question how many citizens we are actually going to be helping in this, with this situation? Because when I look at this map, the buffer systems are, are quite extensive, I don't think that the public would be, are, you know, are gonna be aware of those buffer systems, areas, I look at where I live, I can't have a fire according to this buffer, buffer system, so I'm out. And, so I think, I know that right now there are people living in these buffer areas that are having outdoor fires quite comfortably and not being, having any issues, and now, by law, I mean, by law, they're not allowed to now, but by law, with this, they won't be allowed to. So, you take the buffer system out, all the people that live in that buffer area, and it's huge, I mean, you go from Cumberland basically over to Porter Street, basically no fires, right? You know, you look at, at James Street over to, to, I guess it would be almost, I guess, Stars Road, I, there's not too much in there, but Marcia Avenue, Olive Encore, all, they can't have a fire. So, there are huge areas of the, of the town that will not be allowed to have a fire by the buffer. Then there are those that are in rentals, and I can't foresee any landlord going out and getting a permit for their land, for their tenant to have a fire. So you take out all the rentals in town, and they're gone in terms of having access to a fire. And then you take out all the, the properties that don't have the space to allow that fire, because there are space limits on, on how big your backyard has to be, or from, away from, from a structure. So how many people are we actually allowing to, to have a fire, I guess, and how many are we saying, you can't, but this person can, because you live on this street? I think it's gonna be, it's, I think you're gonna, I, I think we're gonna be creating more of a chaos from this than we are just saying, have your quiet little fire now, nobody complains, and, and that's what people are doing, and I don't have a problem with that. But I think this is gonna create chaos, because people aren't, people are just gonna hear the word, they can have a fire. And I don't think they're gonna be looking at, you know, these buffers, buffers, you know, whether they live in a rental, they won't be able to, and they're, and they're measuring off their space and knowing how much space they have, so those are really some of my big, big concerns with this, you know, like, are we doing, are we doing, actually doing good with this?
Jeff, were you gonna?
Just, just about the buffer and, and the sensitive receptors. So the sensitive receptors are, are those properties around which those buffers are created, and, you know, there's no, there's no magic to it, as far as what the buffer distances are, so, if, you know, you have to look at it and decide, do you agree with creating a buffer around those sensitive receptors, those, those different things that are listed in there? If you don't agree that they need to be buffered, then, then just take them off the list. If you think that the buffer is too extensive, reduce the distance, right? That is all on the table for, for your consideration, right? This is, this is a, a, a draft for discussion, so if you think that the, you know, you have to weigh that out, right? Is, is what's the benefit we're trying to create, and what is the issue we're trying to avoid, and find the, the balance, and, and honestly, I could say, you know, as I said, there's no magic to it, we don't think we've necessarily got it right, that's why we put two different ones in there, and we've put it on this agenda for your discussion and guidance.
Think it, I think we do need buffers, I think buffers are important for people's health, you know, when you have those sensitive areas, and I just, kind of trying to get in my head, how many people are we actually helping here, and, and what kind of a, a chaos are we creating, and a, a division between those that can have one and those that can't, and there will be a large number of people that won't be able to, so I just, I'm just, those are my, just my questions, I guess, that are going through my head.
It, it's gonna require a fair amount of education, absolutely, like Jeff said, there's no magic formula, we went with best practices, you know, I think that that's where we need to go, is with best practices, you know, environmentally, and, you know, for the safety of the citizens of town, you know, before the fact that, you know, my opinion is if we're gonna allow fires, before the fact that we're gonna have people enjoyment, we gotta keep them safe, and, and safe isn't just safe from fire, it's safe from smoke. You know, somebody that has asthma that lives next door, or live in a sens, sensitive receptor area, they're not gonna be very happy with their neighbor burning, and as well with the, the, you know, apartment building situation, we can't have everybody in apartment building having their own fire pit, unfortunately. everybody in an apartment building having their own fire pit, unfortunately.
And you, like, these buffers don't account for asthma.
Absolutely not.
They, they don't, which is, which is what hap, why we said no the last time, because we had, actually had people sitting at this table that said, if I have a fire next door to me, I can't, I just can't. But it was a big space, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, doesn't it, doesn't?
Absolutely. And you're, you're not wrong with, with, you know, right now, there's, what we all understand, there's hearsay about, you know, people having fires in the town. And, uh, right now, it's kind of a don't ask, don't tell, uh, good neighbors looking after each other and, you know, I'm not saying that's, that's a, a good practice or a bad practice, but, you know, the hearsay tells us that that's happening.
Yeah, well, breaking the law is not a good practice, you know, when you get caught, that's, uh, go ahead, Counselor Dairs.
So, just a couple of things. Um, the, the buffer zone, as I see it, even at the ninety meters, um, that's approximately the length of a football field, I guess, or, an American football field. Um, so it seems like it's fairly adequate. When you talk about whether or not this is applicable to every property owner, I think of the property that I'm occupying now, and, uh, I wouldn't be qualified to have an outdoor fire pit, because I just don't have the room. Um, this, this isn't meant to cover everybody, there's going to be people that can't have an open pit fire. But I can still have my propane fire unit, which I have in my patio. So, it's not that, um, I'm being excluded from enjoying the, this thing. Um, I, I hope at the end of the day, if, and I'm not pushing it, I'm just, I brought this forward because of, um, being approached by a number of people who wish to see it happen. I hope at the end of the day, that we don't dismiss it offhand, just because we don't wanna do the work. And, and I, I would think that would be sad. I think we should, it, it had to be explored. Um, I credit, staff did an amazing job pulling this report together, because it, um, boy, it doesn't leave anything out, as far as I'm concerned. Um, I, I look to, um, other jurisdictions, and there doesn't seem to be, um, a huge number of complaints that are coming out of it. In fact, um, just recently, I, I understand the, uh, in the city of Moncton, um, they're in the process of enacting a, a fire pit bylaw, and it's being proposed by the fire chief, because they've got just the opposite issue. They've got people burning it, they don't have a, any way of controlling it. But if you read through the bylaw, uh, we're talking about very small fires that are in a container, in a contained environment, that have a spark arrestor. And, um, and if we trust our citizens to obey the law, then I think the impact on, on neighbors would be minimal, uh, at best. Um, you know, I enjoy a campfire at my summer, we have a cottage, and, and we, we have campfires there, and I think if I'm thirty feet away, I don't even know there's a fire. But in fairness, we do burn seasoned wood. But, um, but at the end of the day, there's, you know, I mean, I'm not sure the buffer has to be ninety meters, maybe that's, maybe that's appropriate, maybe it's not. Um, but I'm certainly willing to, to look at the bylaw in more detail. I think it's, it's fairly robust, and I think it covers most, um, contingencies. And as I say, I don't think we can expect that every single property owner in the town of Yarmouth will have the ability to receive a permit. It's that simple. Um, and, uh, but that shouldn't, I don't think that should pre, prevent those that are qualified from having the ability to apply for a permit. Anyway, I'll leave it at that. Um, I just think it's worth exploring. Anyway, thank you, and thank you, Chief.
CAO?
Yeah, I just, I'd like, just to throw a little more, a little more into the discussion. Um, one of the things that, that's occurred to me around the sensitive receptors is that there could, there could be more over time. So, think about, like, a seniors boarding house is, is, is a sensitive receptor. So, what happens if, uh, somebody comes and they apply for a development permit to open a seniors boarding home in an area right now where they would be permitted under this bylaw to, to have a backyard fire pit? Um, it, it could create a situation where by allowing, by allowing development, we'll be taking away privileges that previously existed for local residents, and, you know, the not in my backyard, um, idea will, will come to bear. Uh, that's something that's occurred to me, and I don't know if you, I don't know what you do about that, um, you know? But I, I, it's occurred to me, as I've thought about this, that, that, you know, obviously, we're not gonna have more hospitals opening up, but there are a number of other things in, in the bylaw as sensitive receptors that could, um, conceivably open in, in a residential neighborhood, um, that would impact on people's privilege under this bylaw. So, uh, it just occurred to me that we, that could be a possible unintended consequence, is that you have people who actually don't want things in their neighborhood, because it could take away the privilege they enjoy.
Yeah, so, so I have a huge backyard, I mean, I'm, I'm, there's so many circles around my property, it's not even funny.
It was by design.
That's what I thought.
On purpose.
Oh, my God. Um, but I, I guess, when I, when I look at this, I, I look and I think, I've got a huge backyard, I, I really do. And I know where the fire would go if I were permitted to have one, it probably wouldn't affect anybody. And, and then I'm looking, you know, a block away, where everybody's just lined up back to back to each other, like, I, that's what gets me, like, I don't, we gotta talk this through, that's why you want it robust, right? We're gonna have robust, because I, I'm not, I'm not against this, I just, I look at that and I think, you got a great big circle around all of these properties, where no one may be affected, and no circles, where, I mean, how many people literally have asthma and, and they just can't breathe? And I, I guess I go back to, um, I just remember Sandy sitting at the table here and saying, you know, even the wood stove next door to her would blow in, and she said, I had to close on my windows, and I would choke, and I, I couldn't breathe, and I was sick, and I'm like, we're gonna, that's what we're gonna do. That's what we're gonna do. And, and yet, I'm the first one to say, I love, I love the fire, so it's, it's a struggle. And I don't disagree with guilt, like, the ones that can, should be able to, but I'm not sure about that we've got it right, the ones that can, like, 'cause it's, it's right in my backyard. Go ahead, Heather.
I, I think of yesterday with the, with the, um, smoke warning, that was in the, from the, from the smo, from the fires in, in Ontario, right? And I have a, a friend visiting who has respiratory problems, and she was having problems. My eyes were burning, I had to go to bed, my eyes were so, were so burning, and I was sitting in my house from, from, and I'm like, this is from the smoke. And it's like, it was, and I'm thinking, if it bothers me, who, I don't have a lot of sensitivities, but yet it was bothering me, what about, you know, some of the elderly folks who do have those respiratory problems? And, and I'm not against people having fires, I'm more, and I know this isn't right, but for people just continuing doing what they're doing, because I think we're just creating a, a, kind of a chaotic situation here, um, by, by doing this, so.
Now, I have, people can't continue to do what they're doing, although I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, but people can't continue to, I get a lot of lights on, go, go ahead, I'm gonna let you talk, 'cause we're having a conversation.
Just gonna say, lis, listen to the mayor, don't listen to the Counselor Hatfield.
No, and that's a hard one, because I put the, I put the propane fire in my backyard, and I had pe, well, Derek, you remember, like, I had people literally stopping their trucks and their vehicles and screaming, the mayor thinks she can have a fire, I'm like, it's a little propane fire. So, I said, I have to put up a fence. Anyway, sorry, okay. Counselor Dairs, you're on, sorry about that.
Yeah, I think one of the things, um, in the bylaw that I most appreciated was the fact that the determination of whether or not this is a burn day, um, would be controlled by the fire department. So, if it was a non-burn day for the province, then the fire department would obviously say, uh, you can't do it. If the winds were a certain velocity, you can't have a fire. Um, I think it's easy for somebody to, uh, to log onto a website and check and see if they got the green light today, or to have a fire or not. Um, so I, I think, um, on days when there's a, an alert like there was yesterday, obviously, um, I would think, ob, it would be obvious that those would be days that would be selected to not, not be able to burn. And, uh, so I think the bylaw is, from my perspective, having read through it, it, it covers most contingencies. Um, and maybe the one thing that we need to consider is whether or not it's not only fifteen feet from a, from a building, but, um, it has to be a certain number of feet from an adjoining property. And I don't know if I read that or not.
Yeah, I, I think there is a, a property boundary law.
I, I read through it a couple times, but, yeah, anyway, um, so I think you can, on smaller lots, you can control that. I mean, I don't think it would've been appropriate, when I lived on Sprucewood Drive, where the lots were the size of a postage stamp, and, uh, it probably wouldn't have been appropriate to allow them there. But again, you know, when that was the situation, uh, I had a propane fire pit, so.
So, don't turn your light up yet, 'cause I wanna ask a question.
What's that?
We haven't had a conversation like this in a long time. Um, so, I always say, we, we write the rule, we don't write the rules for the people that follow, we write the rules for the people that don't. That's the problem. So, I guess my head, my head is saying that there's gonna be a lot of excuses around, you're gonna hear, wow, I didn't know it wasn't a burn day, right? That's, that's what I, so, so then you got more policing to do. I'm not against this, I'm not, I'm just trying to walk my, walk my way through it. And I, I say it about everything we do, we're not writing the rules for the ones that will follow it and have common sense, we're writing it for the ones that will break it, and we have to.
It's, it's gonna end up being, you know, we're gonna get those, absolutely, and it's, and it'll be on, you know, my staff and the bylaw enforcement to, for a while, reasonable period of time, education, you know? Because we are gonna, you know, we're gonna have some growing pains, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, thanks, I just didn't know if you had, would have any answers or something. Yeah. Deputy?
I just know this exists in Halifax, so, you know, if, if it does work there, I believe their whole deal is if you're hooked up to water and sore, then you're eligible to get a permit there, so it is a little more wide open, so, um, I do agree with Counselor Hatfield somewhat, where, you know, the buffer zones, I, I definitely understand them, but sometimes you over-create, you know, and another problem that doesn't exist. But, um, I'm definitely open-minded to this, I appreciate the whole open discussion, everyone kinda putting their ten cents in, and us coming up with the, the best idea, but this does exist in other places too, so, you know, the closer we can look at how it works, if somewhere in Halifax, maybe we could apply some of those things to our, our areas that are more dense as well.
This is probably the most forward-thinking one you'll come across.
What if we said we wanted to remove all those buffers? What would you say to that?
Still be one around Euros.
Okay. God love you.
It's, it's my discretion, right?
Oh, gosh, I gotta stop signing his checks. Okay. Um, all right, so where do we go from here? I'm still, still thinking.
Yeah, so, so, this is, we brought it before you today, because we tend to have these kinds of discussions at, at the committee of the whole. Um, it is a draft. If you want it brought forward to the August council meeting as first reading, we can do that. If you want it to be changed, we can do that and bring it forward. If you want time to think about it, you can take time to think about it. Um, you know, all options are on the table. We were just asked to bring forward a bylaw, um, and, and we've done that, understanding that we know it's not perfect. Uh, we've tried to incorporate ideas, um, but, uh, ultimately, what do you feel comfortable with taking it forward for first reading? If you want changes, we just need direction. Um, if you want time to think about it, that is fine too.
What do you think of folks?
Uh, just one quick question, Jeff, and, um, could you, obviously, there was some research regarding the sensory, or some?
So, so the, the sensitive receptor piece came directly out of the CCME model bylaw, uh, that's where we got that. We didn't see that, as, as I think I mentioned earlier, we didn't see that in Halifax bylaw or in the Shelburne bylaw. We saw it in the CCME bylaw. And the terms they use, like, I mean, hospital's a hospital, but they had, um, I'm trying to think, they didn't refer, I think they referred to childcare facility. Our land use bylaw defines nurseries, so we took the definition directly out of our other bylaw and applied it here, so that there was consistency between our bylaws. Uh, we did add the tourism, the fixed roof accommodation tourism facilities, we added that, that was not in the CCME guideline. But I remember somebody telling me years ago, and, and not, not so long ago, that they're in the business of selling sleep. And, and if you're selling sleep, things like, uh, early morning street cleaners and, and other things that would disturb a visitor who wasn't used to it, uh, you want to have some protection against that. And so, I threw that in, really for discussion. Um, and, uh, you know, it, does it make sense? I don't know. Um, but I thought it was worth discussion, so we, we put it in.
Okay, counsel, go ahead, Counselor Lesser?
Uh, the bed and breakfast, is that like a registered bed and breakfast with an association versus Airbnb? Is there a distinction?
Yeah, so, so we don't regulate Airbnb at this point, uh, within the town. We, we, you know, you can run an Airbnb, and we don't, uh, we don't know, we don't register it or deal with it in any way. Uh, but what is, what is, uh, identified in here is, is registered, uh, fixed roof accommodations, and I believe the registration goes through Tourism Nova Scotia, if I'm not mistaken. And so, that would be updated as, as, uh, new B and Bs open or close, old ones close, uh, that would change the use of the property as, as an active, uh, fixed roof tourism accommodation.
Okay. Okay, so, so we're looking under the legend here, are we, are we comfortable with all those? Are we, like, where do you wanna go with this? Counselor Cleveland's looking for a little bit more time. Go ahead, Counselor Dairs.
Yeah, I, you know what, it's a lot to read through and understand, um, and I, I agree with Counselor Cleveland, I'd, I'd like to take a, a really good, long, thorough look at it, and, um, and see if there's anything in there that needs to be addressed. So, I, I wouldn't mind taking some extra time.
Okay, so, is everybody okay with taking more time to, so what's, go ahead.
So, your worship, if that was the, the wish of counsel, then a motion to, uh, defer this, uh, and you may, may say to the August committee of the whole, or, or some other time, but that would be an appropriate motion.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll make that. Thank you, so are you, worship. Um, I'll make that motion that we defer at least until the next committee of the whole meeting. I'd like to look this over a lot longer, do my own research, um, to a degree, not that your research is bad, that's not what I mean. Um, but, yeah, I wanna look this over pretty thoroughly, so I'll make that motion, thank you.
Okay, so you're good with, you're saying, stay in August?
Yeah.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Dairs. Any more discussion? You're good, Chief, anything else you wanna?
Oh, I'll just keep adding as you bring things to me, but for now, I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
Just remember that I got the water and the foam.
Right? Okay, we're good then? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Good stuff. I gotta, I'm gonna say this, I think that's the most fun conversation I've had since I've been in this seat for eight years. That's, it's the chief, it's gotta be.
Mr. Personality.
No, when you feel safe with a group of people, right? You just, and that's what we've been saying, put it all on the table, we can't make a decision unless it's all on the table, right? So, I, I disagree, it's not disagreement, it's just, okay, so, ATVs. All right, I think I may have asked Lindsay to add this, and I didn't have anything added, uh, and when I added it, I should've removed it, sorry. So, when I added it, I basically was thinking that that pilot was done in April, which was the first date, I believe, it was supposed to be done, and they put that to October. So, I, I have a letter from TIR, from Royden, I'll, I'll, um, reach out to him, which I was supposed to do yesterday, and I think, I think they're on vacation, so I'll reach out and see what the next steps are on that one, because it's, uh, we need those ATVs coming through the town, wherever, wherever they come. Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
Yeah, I guess, it surprised me a bit, and I know that we talk about it every meeting, that everything is very transparent, you can go in and see what's happening, but it did surprise me when I heard that people were thinking that we're against this, when it's been like one of the number one topics we've brought up. Um, so it kinda caught, caught me off guard a bit, that anybody would not realize that we're in favor of it, but... But I don't know if there's, you know, without having anything concrete, there's probably no way to do any PR on it. But, you know, it would be nice somehow to get the message out to people who aren't doing the research. I know, it's, I know that sounds crazy. But to get the message out to let people know that we are in fact trying to work with people on getting this, or this project done.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm going to say this. I, uh, it's going to come out wrong, but oh, wow. The people that we're wanting to get it out to are the very people that aren't going to read it anyway. Because they have, we have said this every meeting, we want those ATVs through town. We have been in the paper, we have, we've done all those things. And you're right, we'd love to get something out, but I don't know what else we can do because the people that don't get it are not going to read that. They, they simply want what they want. And we want the same thing. So that's where, that's where we are. Counselor Daers?
Yeah, well, I appreciate the merits of a, a pilot proj, project. I'm wondering if we can get a sense from them, how long it's going to take to digest and interpret the information that they've got. I mean, you know, if it's going to end in October and take another year for them to, uh, to come to a conclusion. I'm thinking that, you know, two and three quarters of a year way into the, they must have a sense at this point in time whether or not those, those areas that were designated have been problem areas. And, and what I'm hearing is just the opposite.
It's no.
That everywhere, that there's been a pilot project, uh, there's a resounding yes. So it would seem to me that the, once the pilot project ends, and why couldn't it be terminated now if that's the? You know, does it have to go to October? If in fact they're not getting any negative feedback?
Jeff might have that answer.
Yeah, so, uh, your worship, I'm just referring back to a meeting we had, I think it was in January with representatives from TIR. And they kind of explained the, the legislative framework around this. So the, the pilots, and I only learned this detail yesterday, is, is that the pilots allow in rural communities ATVs to ride on the shoulder of the road to, till they get to a connecting trail or what have you. They don't allow ATVs to ride with traffic, which is what we need in the town. They need to be able to travel with, with traffic. So that's, that's a difference. But the ATVs are, are regulated or, or the law around ATV use is in the, is in the Off-Highway Vehicle Act. And the law around use of streets is in the Motor Vehicle Act. And there is not legislation in place that they can cancel the pilot and have that ATV use that is currently going on under the pilots continue. So if the pilot ends, so does the privilege. That's the, it's kind of like the backyard burning thing, right? If, if, if we, if we don't make a bylaw, then there's no privilege, right? And, and so if, um, they're running a pilot, which creates a privilege in some communities and some areas under certain conditions, the pilot ends, the privilege ends. So there needs to be legislation drafted and, and, and ready to go to allow that to continue if, if the pilot ends. So the pilot is probably going to get extended because we're in the middle of an election. Legislation is not going to be ready for October.
It, it won't be, no.
They will extend the pilot. So our best opportunity is to get included in the extended pilot.
Yeah.
Right? And, and with slightly different conditions because we're not a town that has wide gravel shoulders for, for ATVs. We're a town that has, you know, curb and sidewalk, and we need those ATVs traveling with the flow of traffic. So this was discussed at Police Advisory, and I think the fellow from, from TIR had recommended that maybe our traffic authority and our staff sergeant work to, to develop a, a case quickly so that we can be included in the next phase of the pilot. And that will be piloting something different. It'll be piloting, traveling with traffic, it has to be in the town.
Yeah.
And so that would be part of the case. Hey, this is something different. I see, I read in the Vanguard, somebody pointed out that Town Shelburne now also wants this issue resolved within their town. Very similar to our situation, I would guess. So I, I think the timing isn't bad, but we're going to have to work quickly to try and get involved in the next pilot. And, and so that's a long answer to the short question of why don't they just end the pilot? Because if they do, so does the privilege.
We did discuss that briefly at Police Advisory yesterday too, because we mentioned the Main Street possibility, right? Because with the bump outs and everything, everything slowed down. And if you can have a motorcycle and you can have a bicycle with a motor, an illegal motor, you know, you just, you just have to be registered and insured. And this is not a, this is not teenagers on ATVs, right? This is, this is adults with, with license, registration, insurance, everything flowing with the traffic, which is considerably slowed down because of the, because of the work. Go ahead, deputy?
Just to further Counselor Lesser's point about, you know, sometimes people don't understand or get the information that they do. And I know myself coming in green, sometimes, you know, the, the pace that it takes to get things done, people just don't understand. It's not as simple as we want this, we'll pass this tomorrow, it comes in. So I always encourage those people, my first question always is, have you watched a meeting? And if you're an expert without watching a meeting, then that would be like being an expert in a sport without ever playing it or ever watching it. There is a somewhat of an obligation to those people to also do their due diligence as well, with all due respect. And I think, I mean, this, this has been brought up since I've been here. It's been talked about. There hasn't been a counselor who's ever spoke out against it. I mean, the Police Advisory Board's on board, the RCMP's on board. If it could happen tomorrow, it would be done today. So, you know, I just, I do think sometimes there's a responsibility of those people who are making the complaints to inform themselves a little bit, watch a meeting. And it's, it's not that hard to see that that's definitely something on the top of all of our radars.
Counselor Daers?
Yeah, just a quick question, and it's along the same lines, but, and it certainly wouldn't accommodate the everyday user or the person that, or the small groups. But if, if a rally was to be held, an organized rally, would it be possible for them to get a parade permit to go from one end of the, one trailhead to another?
Yes.
Okay.
Right? We get three, one free today. But absolutely, right? And the RCMP would just kind of guide them through and, yeah. Okay, so we're good, I'll just do that homework and, all right. So we've got additions, um, the Kathy Thomas retirement. So Kathy retired from the RCMP after many years. And we were just, Jeff and I were having a conversation around how, how we do this because when one person retires, we don't want to miss anybody. So the, the idea here would be certainly to send, you know, a note out to Kathy to thank her for her service because she's, Kathy's just been such a fixture. Gosh, she was with us when we were working together. So, but the, the, would it be a policy, Jeff, or?
So, so your worship, I think it's a wonderful thought from counsel to, to recognize staff when they reach that point in their career, to, to just send in a, a nice acknowledgement. We also have the opportunity, we have, we always have an annual staff recognition event. And we bring back retirees who've retired in the previous year and we, we recognize them there. But I think a letter, a letter just, just saying, hey, you know what? We, we appreciate you and we're going to miss you and all the best, kind of thing from counsel. I think that, that would be very much appreciated and very timely. And because of COVID, we haven't had a, a staff recognition event in, in probably getting close to two years now. So we've got to get back on that, and we'll have back some retirees like our former fire chief and, and Linda. And we'll, we'll thank them formally at an event that obviously counsel will be present at. But, but, you know, just as a matter of course, we can, we can add these retirement notices to your coun, or your Committee of the Whole agendas. And you can, uh, on behalf of counsel, uh, approve a, a letter. I'd like to put them on each agenda individually, rather than just having a policy and having it happen behind the scenes.
Absolutely. If we can, if we can make sure that they're on each one and then we're not missing anybody. I, I don't like to see anybody go with less acknowledging, because.
No, and they're not dropping like flies, so they're.
No, I know. I know. Okay, so the motion would be to send one to Kathy. All right. Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Daers. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Ahans Project? I don't know what that one is.
Excuse me, your worship, at, at last, our last Committee of the Whole meeting?
Yes.
We had a presentation regarding a project that the Affordable Housing Association of Nova Scotia was hoping to do in some kind of partnership with the town, with Housing Nova Scotia, with Summer Lead and Dora Construction. And you saw some details and you've had some documentation around that. The program that they're hoping to access through Housing Nova Scotia has a deadline of August the 19th. They're looking for a letter of support from the Town of Yarmouth. And, you know, they, they identified in their proposal that they're, they're interested in, in some kind of land contribution from the town. I would think that a letter of support from the town at this point would be in principle, given that the, the, the detail of their proposal is not fully known. You know, they're going to make an application in about a, you know, three weeks' time in a conceptual four pager. I think if you're okay with the concept of making a, making at the appropriate time a land contribution, then I would, I'll, I'll just read some thoughts that I have here that I would encourage you to, to consider in the form of, of support. So, um, so maybe you could indicate, indicate your support for their initiative, refer to our need for affordable housing, acknowledge that Ahans is working with Summer Lead, a private developer, present and respected in our town, and pledge our support in principle as the details of their proposal are developed for Housing Nova Scotia, and that we have land suitable for affordable housing development in our portfolio that Ahans has specific interest in, and we'd be willing to make available, should their proposal be successful in attracting the financial support needed. So there's conditions in there. It's not a concrete, here, here's a deed, good luck. It's, it's, you know what? They're looking to address a need that we have in our community and subject to the support from Housing Nova Scotia and the details of their proposal becoming clear. We have land within our portfolio, not necessarily a specific piece, but that you would be willing to discuss that or support them in that way at the appropriate time. That's the intent. If you agree with that, then that's my recommendation. But if you have different thoughts, obviously you make the decision.
Okay. What do you think in counsel? I, I like everything you put in there in the letter. Sure does. Counselor Lesser?
I'll make a motion that, um, we send a letter of support to the Affordable Housing Association of Nova Scotia with the conditions that the CIO just talked about being met. And that would be in support of a future project that they're working on. Or better wording, if you can do that, Lindsay.
Lindsay's magic. Counselor Daers?
Yeah, I guess my, I'm going to say it out loud again. The only concern I had was, um, management of facility at the end of the day. And so I'm, I'm wondering if that can be, I guess, further explained or nailed down, but I don't know if that's possible at this point.
It isn't possible at this point, because I asked that specific question. They talked about, you know, a private developer involved, they talked about a not-for-profit. And, and as recently as earlier this afternoon, I received another email that said, you know, that is their hope, but they don't have a clear path to it. So at this point, um, if they're going to continue to develop their proposal, they, they, they need some, they need support. It'll be conditional. We'll know details down the road. But nothing leaves our hands in terms of a deed until the financing's in place and that you're comfortable with it.
Okay.
This is, this is a support in principle.
Thank you.
Good. All right, so the motion's made. Who seconded that? Deputy? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Counselor Tor?
Uh-huh. Why are you shaking your head? So your worship, Lindsay organized a, a tour for counsel back between a couple of waves of COVID. We got out and we saw some facilities, had some discussions about some of the properties and, and issues that the town and opportunities that the town has. We have enough on our list of things we want to take you to and show you and talk to you about to at least cover two more tours. So we're wondering what the appetite is so that Lindsay and maybe with, with Chad's help with transit bus and obviously staff's help in, in facilitating those discussions. If you're interested in it, we'll, we'll get another one going.
Okay, Counselor Cleveland?
How many tours have we had so far? You guys have, I have not been on one.
We only did one.
We only did the one?
Did the one, yeah.
Okay. Here's the thing, some of us work, and so it's very difficult to go on the, and I really want to go on these tours, but you have to take into consideration that, you know, there's a workday. And it's not always the easiest thing in the world to be able to stop what you're doing and, and go on these things. Could we make it later in the day? I guess is my only question. And I suppose that's very inconvenient maybe for the rest of you because it makes it a long tour later in the day. But if that's possible.
So how, how late, like, yes, the answer's yes.
The answer, yeah.
Five-ish, you know? Something like that. I can make a five, I can't make a 3:30 most of the time.
And that, I mean, yeah, doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. I just, I'm always concerned with staff because you have to stay late.
Yeah. You, you don't worry about me.
No, I don't worry about you, but I don't, you know.
And I'll work with the other, with the directors or managers of the facilities to make sure that, you know, that they, they can be available. Look, this isn't, this isn't something we're doing weekly. This is something we're doing maybe once in a mandate. So I'm sure, look, staff are, are wonderful at, at leaning in and supporting. So we'll make sure, first of all, that, that you're able to be on the tour. That's the whole point. And the second thing is we'll make sure that we have some people available who can inform you about what we're looking at. So, um, yeah, it's, don't worry about the time of day. The, the one thing I do like to stay away from for staff is, is the weekend.
Weekend.
So I wouldn't want to do this on a Saturday. So if we can do this on a weekday evening, I'm sure we can, we can accommodate you.
Counselor Daers?
Yeah, I got no problem with the later start. Um, just, I think I'd suggest that we do it sooner than later, so we take advantage of the daylight.
Really?
So your worship, the reason I throw that out is I, I'm here next week, then I'm gone for two, and then I'm back. And we can do it when I get back, that's, that's fine. You know? Whatever. I like taking advantage of, of the summer as well, frankly. I think it's, it's more enjoyable to get out and, and see it outdoor facility or situation when it's comfortable.
But next, next week, I'm sorry, huh? You guys do it whenever then, because next week with ZF, I'm committed Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday.
So let's do it, let's do it in August.
Do it when you come back, yeah.
Let's do it in August.
August, September.
Lindsay will send out, how about we do a little bit of a doodle poll?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Send some in August, a couple in August and a couple in September.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean. You can ride right to my house and we'll roast hot dogs on, on my barbecue. Oh, my goodness. My George Foreman grill. And the chief's not allowed to bring his camera. Okay, so we're just going to leave that then, Jeff and Lindsay, you will send. Thanks, Lindsay. Okay, farmer's market letter of support. So I, I met with the local farm market folks yesterday. And they are looking at doing, um, there's, there's a couple of changes around there. And basically looking at doing some changes. You know, they can't, um, they just signed a new 10-year lease for that building, which is amazing. And with that, you know, they, they need to expand and, and get people into that side building. For example, in the winter, you know, folks don't want to go in there because it's cold. So heating and, and, um, insulating, you know, where the rocks are, things like, just a few things that they wanted to do. So they are, they're applying, I believe it's CCH, I stand corrected. They're applying for, for funds. And the deadline is actually, oh, gosh, Lindsay, that deadline is tomorrow. So we're going to do the letter and they had to get, get it done up quickly. So they just want that letter to say, are you in tomorrow? They just want the letter basically to say, you know, we. They just want the letter basically to say, you know, we, we support the, the farmer's market, this is what it means to the town, you know, put our, put our support behind that. And I will, so that's the first part. The second part is that they may not have, they may have to come back to us for some funds, but they don't have any idea what that looks like, because they don't know what the numbers are yet. So I said I would give counsel a heads up on that, but that I would ask if you're okay with sending that letter of support, so that they can apply for funds. All right? Counselor Hatfield?
Yeah, I would make that motion to send that letter of support for the farmer's market.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Cleveland. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And Emancipation Day, deputy?
I received an email last Friday from Department of African Affairs, and they were asking that towns make proclamations, and I know we don't do that, but to just let people know, I guess, or have some type of event for Emancipation Day. I believe this will be the first one in Nova Scotia, and I believe it's being celebrated globally. And we did quickly put together a few people and got the application in, and right now that's at the, back at African Affairs, and we're just waiting here on funding, and if so, we've got a little kind of program, maybe a barbecue, just kind of some history of the day and whatnot that could be done in the town if we, we do get approved. So I just wanted to put that on there and let people know, because they may be hearing about things going on in other places and that we are on it, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Go ahead, CIO.
So I didn't, I didn't catch when the day is? August 1st?
What's that? Oh, that's right.
So, so do you know when you'll know about the grant? So, your worship, might not be my place, but I, but I think that it would be appropriate for council to consider backing that, saying that, that, you know, whether the grant comes in or not, the grant's for $500, that the town would, would support that, that project. And if the grant comes in, that's great. If the grant doesn't come in, at least they've had time to organize and properly promote it and get it off the ground.
Yeah. You want to? Okay. Counselor Daers?
Seconded.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Hang on. That was it? We have some in-camera stuff, but should I go in camera now? We have two things, that letter, and, and if we're gonna okay, okay that $500, then we should probably do that, so it's done. Okay, so motion to adjourn. Okay, and I'm, I'm calling, I'm, I'm gonna call the council meeting, all right? So now we're in a council meeting, calling it to order in the record of attendance, there's no absent with regrets, probably no conflicts, additions or deletions, so under, we're gonna do the letter to A, should we do that letter to Ahand? Yes, and the emancipation, okay. All right, approve the agenda, please. Thank you, Counselor Lesser, seconded by deputy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the, to get that letter written, the letter to Ahand. Okay, Counselor Cleveland, seconded by Counselor Daers. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. The, the letter for the farmer's market? Counselor Daers, seconded by Counselor Cleveland.
Sure.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, and support, the $500 support for the emancipation piece, if, if theirs doesn't come through, moved by Counselor Cleveland, seconded by Counselor Lesser. Any discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, and a motion to go in camera.